Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April the first, to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Madsen?
Here.
McCusker?
Yes.
Schoblum?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. I'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone, to the couple of days of spring we had. I guess we're skipping summer, jumping right back into winter by the weather reports, but hopefully they're not telling the truth again on that. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
And I'll second.
And a motion by Merle, a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Cares? That moves us on to item five this evening, Public Input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give us your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak to anything that's not on the agenda?
I'm Glenn Lundell at 7:30 Cannon Court. And this has to do with the water lines freezing. And, but anyway, I had Ron send me a little thing on service pipes, and it said they're supposed to be laid, they're supposed to be laid to prevent rupture or settlement. The service pipe shall be placed below the surface, and in all cases so arranged to prevent rupture and stoppage by freezing. Then in the next sentence, it says freezing pipes between the main and the building shall be the responsibility of the owner, which kind of, to me, kind of contradicts itself. But, anyway, I had my, my service pipes were insulated before they put in the new service last year, so, so mine would have never froze, because mine froze. And I think part of the reason was, there was a main shut off right, right outside my driveway, which I'm on Cannon Court, and then, then my water line goes out in the cul-de-sac and hooks into that. Then there's another main shut off over by the schoolyard. And, so I had, I had them shut off, the main up, up on Almond Street a ways. I wanted to see if that line was froze. So I shut it up there, and, and opened the fire hydrant there, and there was no water. So then they checked the, the main right outside my driveway in the cul-de-sac, and that one was shut. And so then they tried the hydrant again, and still no water, because it had to come from the other way then, not down Almond Street. And so then we went and checked the other main shut off, and that one was, was also shut. So, so we were dead-ended right there in the cul-de-sac. So I think that was a big reason our service lines froze. So, and I think we should get our money back for trying to unthaw them, for the simple reason that those two mains were shut, and, and we were dead-ended right there. So I don't know if that's the contractor, you know, told the city all the valves were open, which I probably would imagine that's what happened, and, and of course, they took their word for it. But I think they should either, you should either go after the contractor, or if the city gives us back our money, because that, that was a huge reason why our pipes froze, I'm sure. And mine just thawed out Saturday. I got water, might have been Friday, too, I don't know. And then, then my neighbor Joel Wilson, his, he got water on Sunday. But now Joanne Thiem is, is my other neighbor on the other side, and she hasn't got, her pipe hasn't unthawed yet, but she had a longer run inside the cul-de-sac, so it might take a little longer, but, but, anyway, that's, that's my two cents on that. And then, I was just wondering, now, now I got, got my property tax statement for 2014, and it's showing on there that, I don't know what I owe, $400 or something for, for the assessment, for the new water main and sewer and, and street, and the interest, but now we, we haven't gotten a bill on that, so I'm just wondering, is the city going to send out bills for us to pay, or, or whatever? I know we got a, we got a thing last summer that said, you know, what we were going to owe, but it didn't say we were supposed to pay it then, or when we were supposed to pay it, so I don't know. Because it's going to really throw, throw our taxes off when you have a, I mean, they're paid through my mortgage, so I don't know who to address that to, but...
I'll, I'll try to answer that the best that I can. I believe that letters were sent out with the assessment information, telling that the assessments were approved, and then that letter should have stated that we would have needed payment within, I think it was 30 or 60 days from the date that the council adopted it, and then after that, it gets put on the property taxes. The city does not send out any bills for those assessments. That letter serves as your notice.
Okay.
So this amount that was on your property tax statement is your annual assessment.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, maybe should have made that just a little bit clearer, because, you know, you're not supposed to pay anything till, you know, I mean, you do that in construction, you don't pay before the construction is done, so, I don't know, I don't know if the construction was done when, when that was due or not, but I think it should, something should be sent out to clarify that to everybody, but maybe it's just me, I don't know. So, whatever, and that's all I have.
I just wanted to say, too, Glenn, that I've had calls on that from people, I got their tax statements. And I, I left a message with Ron to address that and see where it goes or what happened, because other people not only got an interest charge, they get a principal charge on some other things with crossing Highway 19 or something. So I'm sure one of them will talk more about this once we get it off.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it would be just a lot better if, I mean, it, it, I'm sure it did, did what you said, but, you know, you kind of read it and go file it, and, and, yeah, so, anyway, that's all I have.
Thanks, Glenn. Is that true on those mains that were shut like that?
That's what Ted had told me, so I'm guessing that, yeah, the contractors had left the valve shut after construction. So it wasn't a full loop, you know, it was serving from both ways.
Right. So is there anything we can do to, to look into that, Greg? I mean, or, or Ron on, on, because, I mean, if that caused this to happen, I mean, we ought to be able to look into seeing if we can get money back somehow. I mean, if they cause, if, if that's what most likely caused the problems.
Yeah, we haven't closed the project out, we're still holding a small retainerage on it, so there's some cleanup stuff to do yet this spring, so we'll add that discussion to the, to list.
Okay. Yeah, because, yeah, if they did that, then we probably need to look at that.
And I can, excuse me, I can add on the, on the assessment, on the certification to the property taxes, you know, once that's done, of course, it is done, Goodyear County's going to expect payment, of course, for next year, if you do want to prepay, you would have until November 1st of this year to pay that amount without any future interest being applied. But that's, that's typical with a special assessment project, where, you know, the interest does hit heavy, just like a home, a mortgage. It's, it hits heavy the first few years, you know, gets lesser as time goes on. And in this situation, too, Lenell showed me the agreement, an example of one of the agreements, because there was, this is a little bit unique, too, in that there was a physical agreement with the property owners, whereas you usually don't have that with a special assessment project. And it did say the, the amount was payable in 2014, but I understand the reason for perhaps being, thinking that there might have been a, a notice going out. But at this point, you know, we can't go back to the county and say, yeah, take it We could possibly do something in-house if the councils were directed, but we can't legally just take it off of the tax roll.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? We'll, we'll look into the water thing for sure. I know that on my assessment, it, it came in the same way, and then I know the letter said you had to pay by a certain time for this year, I mean, and then you could pay it off at any time, you know, in future years, you could pay the whole amount off if you really wanted to.
And, and maybe, I was going to, Tom, maybe in May, when we meet, because we're going to discuss the whole frozen water situation, to bear this case also in mind for Cannon Court, and come up with maybe some ideas.
Because the water had, had to come all the way down Almond Street there, which, you know, it, it's, you know, exposed to all that, all the street that's clean, so I'm sure it was good and cool, but then it got to the end of Cannon Court here, so...
That's, that's good to know, I mean, thanks for the info.
Yeah.
It actually feeds the, the backside of the school and feeds down to the Public Works Building, so, you know, they had to turn that off and do all that out there, and I'm sure it's just something that got slipped up and get turned back on again. So they wouldn't have had to lose, like he said.
Yep. Thanks. Okay, that moves us on to item six, the consent agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for accounting period ending March the 28th, 2014. Item B is the meeting minutes for the March 18th, 2014 City Council Meeting. Item C is a peg access technician. Item D is second reading and adoption of ordinance 335 and summary of publication amending Chapter 152 of the Cannon Falls City Code by rezoning certain property from a planned unit development district to an R2 single-family residential district. Item E is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 337 and a summary of publication changing street names in the city of Cannon Falls. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down for discussion?
B.
Okay, item B will become item 7D. Anything else?
Oh, actually, it's A, Robbie, I'm sorry.
Oh, A?
Yeah, it's A.
Okay, 6A will become 7D. Anything else? If not, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item A, adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending March the 28th.
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Cares? That moves us on to item seven, which is council business. Item A is Resolution 2066 approving rezoning for 200 Waters Street LLC. Mr. Maroney.
Thank you. This item was brought before the council at the last meeting and was tabled for further consideration this evening. I'll give just a little bit of background information. This was a request that was submitted to us by 200 Waters Limited Liability Company. Steve Ogey is, is one of the three owners of that company, is here tonight to provide additional information regarding the proposed project, or answer any questions that you may have of, of Steve. But the Planning Commission received the application to consider the rezoning of this property from an R3 district, which I believe it was rezoned that way in 2006, to an I1 limited industrial district to accommodate or reflect the proposal that Steve brought to us through his application. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, did receive some information from the neighborhood, the property owners in the area, and after the consideration of the request and, and the public input, the commission recommended conditionally to the council to rezone, go ahead and rezone this property to an I1 district. Subject to two conditions. One is that a property survey be completed on the property itself. That has been done. I have received a copy of that survey. One of the things that we wanted to, to understand is the relationship of the existing buildings that are on that property to the existing property lines. And I have seen the survey, and the surveys confirmed that the existing buildings on that property are all within the legally described property that's subject to the application, so that's good. The second thing that the commission asked me to do is to receive some follow-up questions or comments from the southeast Minnesota multi-county HRA that owns the townhome units directly to the south of this property, on the south, on the north side of Water Street, but south of this property. I have received a follow-up letter from Joe Wheeler, who was at the public hearing. He asked me to follow up with a response to several questions that they had with respect to what happens if there is a violation of the ordinance, how does the zoning administrator, the city council, the planning commission deal with those complaints as they come in. That's specified by ordinance. I've communicated back to Mr. Wheeler the process that we had followed, and I went on to tell him that at least as long as I've been here, the concerns that we've had expressed to us that are zoning concerns are first and foremost always handled typically by myself and the complaining party. We will always try to do that before we actually go forward with the ordinance and try to enforce through the, through the zoning code. And we've been successful with that so far. In the event that we're not able to do that, the code requires then that two notices, two mailed notices go to the property owner citing the violation, documenting the cause of concerns, et cetera. And the property owner then has typically 30 days to resolve the, the violations. In the final analysis, if, if the violations aren't resolved, the, the property owner is subject potentially to a misdemeanor charge, a fine up to $1,000, or potentially up to 90 days in jail. Now, again, that's going to depend a little bit on the nature of the violation, but that's ultimately the protection that the, the zoning ordinance provides to the public relative to property concerns. So I did explain that to, to Mr. Wheeler. I haven't had any response back from him, at least at this point. So I think, again, with, with the application that came to the Planning Commission, the, the public hearing process that we went through, trying to deal with the questions that were raised to the commission that night, the commission made the recommendation to go ahead with the rezoning. The commission understands, and we talked about this, that when we do a rezoning of this type, we're really left with dealing with the property owners who are requesting the, the rezoning, in this case Waters LLC. And I think the commission and myself are very comfortable with that. The larger question is, in the future, if they were to sell the property and different owners came in, the zoning is there, what do we do at that point in time? And again, if, if, in that circumstances that were to happen, we would follow the, the zoning cord, zoning code enforcement provisions as we would with any property. Hopefully, we could resolve those in the future if, if, if they do occur, but that's what we're left with, with the rezoning of this type. So the, the commission's recommendation to the council is, is to go ahead. If you've got any questions of, of me, or Mr. Ogey, he's here tonight, we'd be happy to try to address those.
No, I'm going to tell you from the start, I don't like it. Why are we setting ourselves up so that if, in a few years, if Mr. Ogey decides, well, all my business is getting bigger, so I got to move, and something else comes in there, we're stuck. You know, we're stuck, we're, we're putting an industrial island in a, in a residential area. I mean, we start doing that, we might as well just, every other house do it, you know? I think, you know, industrial belongs in industrial. I mean, we've got other places in town that could handle this business, and without, without having to do that. I mean, with, you know, there, you might have one pickup truck, you might have two pickup trucks going in and out of there, but all summer long, we're going to have a lot of trail traffic right through there. I just don't agree with putting industrial in, in an area like this. I think it should stay residential.
All, all I will say, Mayor, and we did have this conversation with the Planning Commission, the, you know, the circumstances in this case, because we have an existing building that up until sometime last year had been used for commercial industrial purposes, and as a legal non-conforming use, irregardless of the zoning, had they continued to occupy industrial use in that building, there wouldn't have been a requirement for rezoning. If they discontinue the industrial use for one year, they lose their, their non, their legal non-conforming status, and that's what happened in this instance, probably by a matter of, of a couple of months, as, at least as far as I understand it. So it's one of those cases where we've got an existing building, it's had a historical commercial industrial use.
That doesn't mean that we have to let it continue to go that route.
Yep.
I mean, it was there before, I mean, but then, I mean, then we had the residential areas build up around it, I mean, and then stopped being a commercial building for a year. So, I mean, why are we going to just, you know, now rezone it to something that we've already got residential there? I mean, I mean, you're, you're talking, putting businesses right in the middle of neighborhoods, and, and I don't agree with that.
Dave, would, is Raw Bistro an example of something similar?
Yeah, Raw Bistro, north and a little bit west of this, on the other side of the river, we ran into kind of a similar circumstance there. Now, that's not an R3 district, that's a residential business district. But the residential business district, as it was defined in 2006, didn't allow, in this case, Raw Bistro, to occupy the former Lawrence Meat Processing Facility. So what we ended up doing in the, in the residential business district is they were issued an interim use permit. Had we had, in the R3 district, a similar opportunity to look at an interim use permit, I'm guessing I would have recommended that to the owners, to, to seek that kind of zoning, but we don't have that in the R3 district. Had we had, in the R three district, a similar opportunity to look at an interim use permit, I'm guessing I would have recommended that, uh, to the owners, uh, to, to seek that kind of zoning, but we don't have that in the R three district. So what's gonna happen with Raw Bistro in the future, as the new zoning ordinance is adopted by the city, probably all of the residential business district areas, and that's a large geographic area in this community, as, as you know, uh, we may very well end up with, with islands of property that have had historic commercial, industrial, multifamily, single-family residential use that we're gonna have to sort out as a planning commission when the new zoning takes effect. So we've got a little bit of experience with a kind of a similar situation across the river from here, where, again, we had an existing property, it was vacant. We had a proposal by Raw Bistro to come in and operate there. We issued through a public hearing process, council approval, an interim use permit. And knock on wood, that's worked out very well in that neighborhood. I haven't had any complaints at all. Will that be true here? We don't know. So again, I think, again, it, it's a situation, and we wrestle with this at the planning commission, where we have existing properties, existing uses, existing buildings, vacant or not, where we try to work as best we can with those who are proposing to make investments or to retain or continue to use those properties, but it's not a perfect, perfect situation.
I, uh, you know, I guess, I, I just don't like the word light industrial. That's, that's a wide open word. Um, when you talk about the previous owners that were there, the previous people there before, they ran a modern pop welding shop with the garage door open and, and, uh, not a lot of traffic, and so I, I kinda know what was there before. The, the other thing is, is that, uh, I guess on one hand, I'm excited that somebody wants to make this investment, somebody wants to do this. On the other hand, I just don't like, uh, the light industrial. I would like to, if we're gonna do something like this, um, I'd like to put more requirements on it. Some of the things I thought of is I would like, uh, to have to be permitted every year. I would like, uh, to see openings no more than six in the morning till six at night.
No, but it's all one thing.
Five days a week. Um, I'd also like to see something with the amount of vehicles that are gonna be there. And no parking on the street, because we already have parking on the one side, it gets tight through there. I would also like to see no vacuum forming or injection molding. I'd like to see, uh, no pollution from, from manufacturing. The last thing I wanna see is a large exhaust fan hanging on that building running twenty-four hours a day, holling up on top of that hill. I guess the other thing is, that I've been in town here for so many years now, I've seen wonderful family organizations that have the best intentions and do all the right things. But, uh, people get a major health problem or something happens, and then all of a sudden it gets sold. And a new place that has no connections to Cannon Falls has their light industrial, um, permit, and they define it different than, than we do. Uh, so they, they are just some of the things that, uh, I'm worried about on this. Um, I would like to see more of a conditional use permit that has to be renewed every year. Um, and if everybody's meeting that, I don't see any problem. If there's plastic parts being shipped in and they're being assembled there, and you got three, four people up there working and an office staff, I don't see a problem with that. But one thing with manufacturing, it always leads to more testing, uh, more investment if I do this myself, and the next thing you know, we got vacuum forming going on or injection molding or something else. I also thought, when we built our library, I wished there would have been some way we could have bought this building, and I thought it would have been a beautiful spot for our library. Uh, so I keep thinking that, uh, the ideal situation would be, uh, an office complex or a workout center or something connected to the trail. Um, and yet, sometimes that just don't work out, or the right person isn't there to invest in it to do that. So on one hand, I'm excited that somebody wants to take on this project, maybe fix the building up, make it look a little better. I also like the old house there. I wish somebody restored that instead of tear it down. Um, but I am concerned to just give an open-ended thing where you can go in there and do whatever you want and get a five hundred dollar fine. It's kinda reminds me back of, uh, this fracking sand thing over here when we gave per- permission to work with that. And all of a sudden, their limits was seven o'clock at night, and they wanted to run to ten. And, uh, we bent the rules to let them run to ten o'clock. I never did like that. Uh, they more or less told us the stuff of the, our year, and they were gonna do it anyway. So, um, I don't wanna get into them circumstances, uh, and I am sure that you and the Lawrencees would be wonderful, um, accommodating people to work with us on this. What bothers me is if stuff would happen, it changes hands.
I, I guess I would say that we ought to be encouraging people to take over existing buildings that aren't being used, especially if it's, in the case of what Steve is doing, a- as far as industrial type work is fairly benign. Um, I, I, I don't see it as a problem. If we judge everything on going, the proposal that Steve and Rob and Mike are making, and we like that, but our worry is about what's gonna come down the line. Is that how we're gonna operate the city from now on? It's just, well, you know, this might be okay, but God, we gotta worry about the next guy down the line, five or ten years. I mean, is that how you wanna operate as a city?
No, I just like a requirement that says that if, if it ever does sell, that the permit's gotta be reissued and everybody knows where it's at again. Uh, I'm not saying I wanna stop it, that's the last thing I'm saying. But, uh, I do, I would like to see more restrictions.
I mean, we've got other places where industry can go, not in the middle of a neighborhood. I mean, there's other places in town that have, uh, I mean, you got the Napa Building behind, uh, the old First Farmers. I mean, they could do the same thing right there. Uh, you've got, um, places, you know, you've got some small parcels of land out in the industrial park. I mean, there's places that, that these things can go besides in the middle of a neighborhood.
But maybe these are places that he can't afford or won't fit his business. And would we be having this conversation if the previous business would still be in business? Didn't you say something about?
They have legal non-conforming status, uh, in terms of the prior commercial industrial use there. Had they been operating and had they generated noise, odors, things under their ordinance that are already precluded or already subject to our, uh, enforcement, we would have had an enforcement, uh, violation against them at that time, just as we would anyone else.
Right.
She's talking occupancy, though. If, if it would have been less than a year, yeah, we wouldn't have.
Right.
Yeah, if, there, no, there, there would not have been an application for rezoning had they been able to, the existing owners, had they been able to prove to me that there was an operating use within the last year as a commercial industrial, then this would have carried on as a legal non-conforming use, and there would not have been.
Sir, can you tell me exactly what your operation entails?
Absolutely. I'd love to tell you what I do. I have a small machine shop. I work in more like, not exactly micro machining, but very small parts. Um, most of my work goes through cancer research machines, um, cell detection scanners and things like that.
How big, how big of parts do you make? How big are they?
Uh, the majority of them are smaller than a dime. The maximum that I can fit on my machine would be a twelve inch by sixteen inch part. Um, as far as machining, the machines I own are the sm- basically the smallest in their class.
And when you, when you ship these parts out, how big a, a truck is needed to ship them out, or the parts that you bring in? How big a truck do you need?
A hundred percent of my parts leave via UPS or FedEx. Uh, occasionally, I will need to have a truck come in and bring me some longer steel. Currently, I have it dropped at a friend's dock and then take it to where I operate now. Operate out of my home, south of town. I've been out there thirteen years. Um, I don't think, but I know that you could talk to any one of my neighbors, and you would not hear any complaints about noise, odors. But you're right. You don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring. But what we're bringing you today is we have a building. If it wasn't there, we wouldn't consider it. Let's face it. It's a building that's not gonna be turned into residential homes, multi-dwelling apartments. The structure's just not gonna do that. What would be left would be to raise that building too. The cost of that, well, someone might can do it, but they're not gonna do it for a little office building. They're gonna do it for another multi-dwelling home that you can have block to block and forty feet. I think that's the kind of money that would have to come in to reuse that land solely in that purpose. I'm not an expert at that, though, but it is a very stout building. There has been machine shops operating in, in, for the last year up until March first of two thousand thirteen. They didn't have any complaints. You know, Leroy, I guess you live real close, you know? Basically, our business is no more than that was there, but we would look to, uh, use some more of the space. We plan on putting a roof on it, adding access to the second, third floors that don't exist now, redoing the facade outside of it, cleaning up the pile of bricks, getting rid of all the brush, really making the place look nice. We have a hundred thousand dollars on the table to do that as soon as we own that place. The house, yes, we do plan on raising it. Uh, the problem with trying to fix it up, I don't know if you've ever been in it. It's been completely gutted. There's nothing but stud walls in it. The roof has failed. Uh, there's a lot of rot down what I would, let's see, north, down the east wall. You can even see it from the outsides, messing up the stucco from a hole in the roof. Yeah, it was built in eighteen eighty, and it's a cute old house, but being that it's been left in such condition, we don't feel that any amount of money could really bring it back. The glory. So we would like to raise it, leave that lot just green. Personally, I don't have a plan on expanding the building. If my business grows out of that, yes, I would move. You know, I'd like to see a glass art artisan in there, which would, you know, may be making wares for sale. He would probably need the light industrial zoning. Potentially a wood shop, little cabinet shop. I don't know if you've been in that building, Leroy?
Yeah, I have.
You know?
Pretty much know it all.
Yeah, you know, you can't get upstairs real easy, but if we can fix that, there's a couple nice little suites up there. Uh, the, being that it is a hundred percent concrete, the noise coming out of it would be minimal. It would look a lot nicer at the end of this year than it's gonna if we don't get this deal. We could look at something like Leroy was talking, but I think if I had to come every year and renew it, I don't think I could take the chance of the investment that I'd be making in it to lose my right, just for whatever reason. Not that I plan on being a bad neighbor. We expect to be there a long time. Uh, my business is thirteen years old now. Uh, the Lawrence Brothers, Mike and Rob, longtime residents, lifetime residents, I suppose, of the city. They're looking to improve the city here too. It is an interesting building. It would be a shame to tear it down. It does have some historical significance. We totally believe we can make this work. I'll be on site every day to answer the neighbors' questions. Like Dave said, we don't wanna have to go through a lot of motions to fix a problem. We just wanna talk about it and we'll get it fixed.
Well, you know, another thing I'd like to point out is, we have a lot of industrial-based businesses that are right adjacent to, uh, residential businesses, and you know, what, what Steve is proposing is, is far more benign than some of those existing businesses we have today that are, um, you know, all you have to do is go out to the north end here where we got Cannon Equipment and PPI and, and Burquist. They're all right next to residential businesses, or I mean, to residents, excuse me. You know, it's, it's the nature of the game. Uh, it's worked out well, even though Raw Bistro is not an exact duplicate of this situation, but you've seen where that's worked. Uh, all of us have seen that working well within the neighborhood.
And I, and I can respect, uh, Mr. Robinson, your, your point of view. You know, if, if it was a perfect world, we wouldn't do it. If the building wasn't there, we sure wouldn't ask to build one in the middle of a residence.
I think it's a great investment for you guys, though. I mean, um, I think there's a lot of potential there. I like the idea of your, your hometown, uh, entrepreneurship or doing your own thing there. I'm fine with that. Uh, but there are, we do run into problems. I mean, we got a thing over here with Burquist, I believe it's Burquist, that we have a real odor problem at times in certain parts of our residential district.
Right.
And that's what we're, that's what I am saying is, I, when you get so big and you get the urge to do your own injection molding instead of ordering these parts in, um, that's the point I'm trying to make is, no, we don't want a lot of ventilation. We don't want injection molding going on. We don't want smells on certain days of the week.
Right. I can say in my shop, we scrub our own air. We don't flip it around outside. Just doesn't make sense to put all that, well, when you're buying propane, didn't make any sense to put it outside this year, you know? Right, I, you know, I don't know what I can tell you, you know?
And I think we have, we have ordinances in place where if you do violate one of our ordinances, we have recourse. I don't see a problem with this.
I'll, I'll just mention that, just for clarity too, there, that we have two industrial districts, uh, in our zoning code. I one, which is the limited industrial district we're talking about here, and then the I two, which is primarily the industrial park, where we have a, a much more extensive, uh, type of manufacturing that's allowed there versus the, the limited, uh, I one district. I'll tell you that within our, our I one district, uh, it, it's very clear that the manufacturing or assembly of products, while they're allowed, permitted in the industrial district, the I one, uh, they're not allowed if they produce exterior noise, glare, fumes, obnoxious products, byproducts, or waste, or creates other objectionable impact on the environment. It's specifically stated in there. So I think, again, as we talked about that at the planning commission, we, and we reviewed much more closely the, the specific zoning requirements and what we have here with the council. I think this was the best choice for this applicant to pursue. Is it perfect? No. In terms of our existing ordinance, I think it's clearly the best. The second thing I'll say, that when we received the survey, there was questions by the Stedmans, the adjoining property owner, relative to if this does go ahead, what's their ability to expand that existing building? And now that we have the survey, it's pretty clear that that's a legal non-conforming structure. The large building that Steve's talking about occupying his business is in is a legal non-conforming structure. What that means is, if he would want to expand that building, he wants to put an addition on the building to the west, to the east, whatever, uh, he's not allowed to do that under current zoning, because you can't expand a, a legal non-conforming structure. He's right on the north property line, doesn't have a setback on the north. They're not gonna be allowed to expand unless they come in for a variance application. They are a future owner, were to come in for a variance application, at which time they have to prove to the planning commission for their recommendation, ultimately the council for approval. They have to prove that there's practical difficulties that are under state statute that make them so different, and that what they're proposing to do is, is so unique that it would substantiate the approval of a variance by the city council. That test may or may not be made, depending on what's proposed in the future, which we don't know at this point. So I think with respect to part of the concern that the Stedmans raised as being the adjoining neighbor, uh, to the north, they were concerned about solar access and blocking. they were concerned about solar access and blocking that, and we talked about that at the Planning Commission level before we got the survey in, which is one reason why the Planning Commission wanted the survey. Now that we see the survey, it is a legal, non-conforming use, and they're not gonna be able to simply come in and get a building permit next week and expand that building, they're not gonna be able to do that. So there's a sep- separate process for that. So I think, again, in the final analysis of the Planning Commission, while I think they would agree it wasn't a perfect recommendation in their mind, with the zoning that we've got in the limited industrial district and the provisions we already have in our code, if there is a violation either by these folks or someone down the road, zoning administrator's gonna have to enforce it, and it may or may not lead to a, a, a position where the city council's gonna be asked to weigh in on that, we don't know that. And second of all, that they're not gonna be able to, under the ordinance, expand that existing building without a special permit. So I think there's protections here, is it perfect? No. If we would've had an interim use option, if we would've had a conditional use permit option, if we would've had time to go through and, and write a new ordinance providing additional protections to the degree that the council wanted them written, you know, we could've pursued that. But with their interest in buying and their interest in deciding to, to try to go ahead and get this permitted so that they can move forward, this is, this is the best we had. But I would agree, and I think the Planning Commission agrees, that there's, there's adequate protections here that if we have a problem now, I'm very comfortable we can handle it now. In the future, if they do leave and the zoning is there, we would have the right to rezone if we chose to, or we force the zoning administrator and ultimately the council to enforce to the extent that there was a violation under the ordinance. And again, the, the, the limited industrial district is pretty clear, and I just read parts of it, in terms of what protections, uh, we watch over and what the operator has to maintain the property standards to in order to comply even with the, the industrial district.
I appreciate the fact that you people are looking into this. I appreciate the fact you're willing to work with our tax base in town here, invest in a building like that. I think Dave has helped me a lot with my questions about protection. And I guess the main thing is, is that, uh, you know that we, we care about your investment and we're grateful for that, but we also care about the rest of the citizens of town.
Oh, absolutely.
And we're looking out for them, too.
Absolutely.
So, uh, appreciate your time.
If you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Any other questions? Okay, if there's no further discussion, then the chair will take a motion on resolution number two, twenty sixty-six approving the rezoning.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Merle and a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carrie's. And then move this on to, uh, the second part of that, the introduction in first reading of ordinance three thirty-six, amending chapter one fifty-two of the Cannon Falls City Code by rezoning certain property from R three medium-density residential to an I one, uh, limited industrial district. If we can all move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Leroy, second by Merle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carrie's. And move this on to item seven C, pool repairs.
I believe in talking to the Public Works Commission members that they probably wanna table this for the next meeting so we can get some, a little tighter numbers, is that correct?
I don't, I don't think that was the case, I know we had, Leroy attended the meeting today and he was somewhat interested in that, but...
I think, I think we almost have to, um, make a decision tonight so that we can get some numbers and move forward.
And I think what Public Works, we, we discussed this, uh, fairly extensively this afternoon. And it was, uh, the opinion of the Public Works Commission, rather than spend, uh, money on repairs, was to close the pool for this year. And hopefully, um, in short order here, within the next month or two, uh, come up with a new plan for a pool that would come in at a far less, uh, cost. Similar to, similar in design to what was proposed before with some changes, uh, uh, things like maybe moving handicap parking up on top instead of raising the whole parking lot and, and not putting as many bells and whistles initially, just a little more bare-boned, uh, and...
Getting quotes for some of the bells and whistles.
Yes, as alternates.
Yeah.
And, um, because in order to not lose a second swimming season, we would, we would have to, as a council, move forward fairly quickly. I, I believe we talked about, uh, we'd almost have to have the bidding process in place by June or something like that, and then when and if those bids came in, then of course the council can decide yea or nay. Is that, Tom, does that seem to...
Yeah, that seems, uh, I, I wish there was a good plan B, there really isn't. It's like, how big of a Band-Aid do you put on that? You know, do you throw two hundred thousand dollars at it to, to buy you two years? To me, it doesn't make sense, you know? Maybe, uh, closing it down makes some sense, uh, we could save the, the operational money that we would lose this year of fifty thousand dollars. Plus, we know we're looking at bare bones minimum of probably forty thousand dollars in repairs, so that's just my thought. And you know, it's a nineteen sixty-three pool that was designed to, to last forty years and it's on its forty-six years, so it's like, uh, you know, how much lipstick can we put on the pig before it's enough? You know, so that's where I'm at.
In my opinion, it does not pay to sink any more money into this pool. We either close it permanently and go on to something else, or we build new.
And I would pretty much concur with that, as, uh, as did our third, uh, member of the, of the commission, so... I won't put Jeremy on the spot, though.
I, I got a little different take, and I gotta share it with the council, I shared it with Public Works today. But, uh, if we're gonna make this investment, probably the best we're gonna do is about two and a half million dollars in a pool. Our pools used to be raised locally. It was talked at the Public Works meeting that the town is pretty, pretty tapped out right now on, uh, giving. And I certainly agree with that with our library and hospital and all that stuff. But also, for the city to take on two and a half million dollars with all of our big projects that need to be done, I, I can't see making that, that big of an investment in, in this short a distance. I also believe that we can get that pool going temporary for the summer, four fifty thousand or less. I also believe that, uh, if we put up the new pool and did everything the way they wanted it originally, it's probably gonna be two hundred thousand dollars a year on that thing, pay for it. And, and I would be happy if we got half of that in every year, so I think we'd be doubling our expense. If you're gonna lose a hundred thousand a year on a new pool and everybody's happy, uh, I don't know if that's worse if you losing fifty thousand a year and they don't quite like it, but it works. So, um, I don't quite know what the answer is. I did ask for some local people to look at it, to give me their opinion, and they haven't done that yet. We always seem to get people from a pool aquatics or something, and of course, their first thing out of their mouth, it's junk and you need a new one, and I realize they're in the sales business, too. So, um, I, I don't feel that, uh, if we had to spend fifty thousand to keep that pool open and not another two years till we get things figured out and we can get our, our big number of things taken care of first, I would like to do that. But, uh, I also, uh, if it gets to be too expensive and you're dumping too much good money after bad, I understand that ain't any good either. But we are in the business, I look at the pool not as an entertain, entertainment thing anymore because if the rest of the kids are like my grandkids, they spend all their time on their damn computers. Uh, drives me crazy, uh, they'd rather be on that than they would go into the pool. And, uh, if you're gonna put a pool in, you better put plugins all the way around that thing 'cause they're gonna have their laptops with it. So, uh, uh, I look at the pool more as a safety issue to get kids trained, um, to get their swimming lessons and get their water experience. If we are gonna shut this pool down, then we're definitely gonna do something through community ed where we bus kids to another town, um, and I don't like the idea of that, but that's just my thought on the whole picture.
Well, that, uh, have, working with community, hopefully working with community ed, that would be just a, hopefully a one-year thing, we hope. Another item I'd like to point out, uh, for those of us who've been the council for many years, we have a, a capital improvement plan, and there's always been a, a placeholder in there of three million dollars for a pool at some point. And, and as council members know, yeah, sometimes something might get pushed back or pushed forward on that capital improvement plan, but, so it is there, and, and it's a three million dollar placeholder that we've been using, and the, the numbers we talked about this afternoon was maybe we can do a pool in the neighborhood of two, two and a half million, um, which I think people can, they can handle that a little bit better than the, uh, the four point two that was submitted, even though most of us know it wasn't gonna be four point two, but, um, and Leroy, you're right on. It's, uh, the pool's important 'cause we do have to, uh, uh, teach our kids how to swim. I know I had someone said, "Well, I'll just teach my kids to swim by throwing them in the river." Well, that's not gonna work, you need a structured environment for that. And, uh, and we still get a fair amount of use, uh, out of the pool. As a city, you know, we, we use our parks, parks don't pay for themselves, that costs us every year. But, uh, parks, pools, a few other things are amenities to bring people to the, to the, uh, community. And, and you wanna, you wanna put as many things out there, yeah, it's, it's spendy, but you know, we got forty-some years out of, out of this pool, and I, and that was pretty good. I mean, that pool opened when I was a, a kid, about, probably about eleven years old back then when that was built, and, you know, it's... I, I think, I think, though, and Merle is right, we can't be throwing good money after bad. If we throw in fifty, seventy-five, a hundred thousand, whatever it takes to open it this year, on top of that, we're gonna have the operating losses that we normally have. And who's to say that someone might not come in and shut it down? Or various ADA issues and what have you, 'cause we've never done anything, or the city has never done anything.
Issues because the wall is falling apart.
Well, there's that, too. Wall is failing on the pool, but, uh...
Have you, uh, had anybody else to look at that wall?
I've got three, uh, pool contractors that are gonna come in, but of course, this is a busy time of year for them, too, so I haven't had anybody. I had a, a local looked at it today and was relayed to me that he'd like to dig into it before he would even begin to try to put a dollar on it because he just doesn't know what's going on in the backside, as would nobody. I, I don't think anybody would wanna put a hard number to that wall.
And I, and I think, too, Morris, that, uh, even if we were to find some sort of contractor to fix that wall, the time involved, we would, we would certainly lose at least a portion of the season, at least. So, is it worthwhile, or do we just close it and say, "Let's, let's try a new tact and see where it come from"?
Now, those heaters and that, can we, do we have to go, I mean, like aquatics and that, we wouldn't go through, but you, can you buy them on the outside somewhere, I mean, from these pool people, distributors?
Yeah, everything could be purchased as a separate line item on there. And the high efficiency is out there now that we don't have now, so there's, there's better mousetrap out there right now than what we have, and I think, yeah, good.
These were, I think, high efficiency when we put them in, seventy, eighty years ago. Uh, the Lynch and Bar is a very expensive pool, pool boiler. And, uh, I remember at the time, they talked to me about it, I told them I didn't think they were worth it, and they put them in, so... We, we should have quality boilers in there, but, and the other thing is, you gotta think about, too, is it's only two or three years ago, they took and put a whole new roof on that, uh, the pool rooms and stuff. Uh, they spent like twenty-five, thirty thousand on that that year to redo that. So, I don't know, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's a lot of money, and I don't quite know what the answer is. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Well, if I may, I think the thing that we got out of Public Works today was, um, number one, it's time to hire lifeguards. So I think we need to know whether we're open or we're closed. You know, I think that needs to be the first decision. And then, you know, like we talked about, I mean, even with that wall, I think now that's identified as failed, I don't think you can open it without fixing it, 'cause then if it does fail and it hurts somebody, there's gonna be a lot of liability there. So, uh, I think the first thing is to say, okay, we realize we probably can't even open it without fixing this, which could take a month out of the season, could take a month and a half, who knows? We don't know it until we rip it open and find out. But number, so, number one would be, yes, we agree the pool has to be closed for at least a period of time, if not the whole season, and if you wanna decide that tonight, that would be preferable to us. But then number two is, can we go out and explore options? Can we go get some actual bids on what would it be just to build just the bodies of water? You know, forget the water slide, forget the climbing wall, forget some of the cabanas, whatever. But we don't even know what that would really cost, we have some cost estimates, we think it's probably about two million dollars. But can we go out and, and effort that and, so that we can bring some concrete numbers to you to say, "Yes, we wanna do this, no, we don't wanna do this"? So I, I think that's really the two things that we're kind of after.
And if you look at this, uh, item here of, uh, the second page of this item, I think all of us council members got, where, uh, some of the recommendations from, uh, USA Aquatics, and they talk about if we went full bore to fix everything up to top-notch, uh, status, you know, it, it could be, approaches almost one point five million dollars. Well, you know, but you still, but you still have a forty-five-year-old pool.
The one thing, too, for you, you brought up, uh, just building basic pool, is, uh, so you cut this thing by a million dollars or two million dollars, and now you've got just a basic bathtub over there without the bells and whistles that the kids like. So do we end up with the same amount of tenants we got now, and the numbers are higher? So where are we at when we think that way? That's where, um, I guess I, I don't see anything wrong with, uh, coming up with estimates to see what it would really be. I think that would be a good thing to have better numbers. I wish on the referendum that people would've had about three choices instead of one. I think the referendum was a waste of money and a waste of time. So, uh, I, I think there could be a lot better options, and I'd also, um, in the meantime, uh, there's nothing hurt, there's lo- nothing lost to get our two local cement people over there and say, "How bad is that wall that everybody talks about"? How bad is it to temporary, maybe you drill, uh, four, four-inch holes behind it and fill them up with concrete and it'll hold for two years, I don't know. Maybe you cut the whole end of the wall of the pool out, it's three times higher than we think. Pool at all, and, um, if we had the options of the pool at least working, um, then you start the construction in the fall as soon as the, the pool is done for the year. I don't see why you'd have to lose a year in there, so I don't know if all this was really well laid out for us. Uh, I don't say it's anybody's fault. I don't say it's anybody's fault, but I just think there's a lot of things to be discussed.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that, uh, you know, listening to this, uh, I mean, there's, there's sides, there's two sides to the story and, and one of them is, yes, I mean, I agree with you that, uh, you know, we do have people that, uh, are looking for jobs for the summer that, okay, they may have to go start looking elsewhere. Uh, but the same token, you know, if, if we had, I would agree with shutting it down if we had bids in right now saying, "Okay, this is gonna cost us this amount of money to fix this right now." I mean, uh, uh, because right now, we're just looking at, at guesses. I mean, we don't have anything significant that we can really sit down and say, "Okay, this is what it's actually gonna cost to fix it," or, uh, I mean, we haven't, nobody's even been out there to look at the wall. You know, and we're just...
A lot of the figures I have on my sheet, I pulled off the USA Aquatics.
Yeah, so I mean, we, we don't have anything concrete. I mean, speaking of concrete walls, we don't have anything concrete right now to really, to really rely on to make the decision. Yes, we don't wanna lose any money because that's a, it's a losing proposition, but it's a good amenity. But I mean, the same token, uh, I think we need some good concrete numbers. I mean, I think we should at least put it out two weeks till the next council meeting to, you know, table it until we can get some concrete numbers to say, "Okay, hey, what, uh, what is it, what would it cost to possibly fix it?" I mean, if it costs, say, thirty thousand dollars, you know, that wouldn't be too bad. If they start getting fifty, sixty, seventy thousand and then we, we lose another fifty thousand on it for the year, I mean, that's already a tenth of a, you know, of a one-million-dollar or one and a half-million-dollar pool, so, I mean, I think we need some concrete numbers to really look at before we make that, that final decision on the year.
And the flip side of that is, is if we don't get these fairly quickly, we could lose two seasons.
That's why I said...
Because I do not believe that we should open this pool this year.
That's why I said, you know, let's, let's go two weeks out, get those, see if we can get those numbers in, in the next two weeks and then make the decision at that time.
And, and what if we can't get the, the...
Well, then we'll have to make the...
...firm numbers because what if, they can't tell what to do and, and the wall's not the only problem with the pool. I mean, there's a...
Right, right. There's other issues there too.
There's a big, a big number of issues. You know, they may not be able to tell on the wall unless they can somehow get behind it or whatever to see as, as was explained to me this afternoon. When that pool is full of water, what you got, yeah, the water pushes the wall up, except at the water line. And you've got frost issues, which is so, part of it's being pushed this way and the water's pushing it that way. Those forces over the last forty-plus years, you know...
If we get, uh, these two local contractors, I feel confident both of them that are gonna give us a, a straight-up answer. Uh, there's gonna be no problem. I did, I did talk to one this afternoon that, uh, said if we call, he'll come over and take a look at it. Uh, the other thing I wanna point out in some of these numbers too is now we got the spray pad chemical feed, we got the spray pad pumps. Well, if we'd had a pool in here that was only twenty years old, we'd still need these, put these things in this year. So, some of this stuff would be normal operating cost too. So, I, I just, if, if there's some way to really come out with a true number and know what our dates would be if they come along and say, "You know, we couldn't have it going till August first." What's the point even bothering, you know, uh? But until we know all that, uh, I'm just not comfortable to, uh, to not know more about this. And, uh, I would also like Jeremy and his staff to give us more options on a new pool if we have to go there.
So, are, are you saying that we should hold off on any potential hiring? Because it's gonna get to the point where these kids are, you know...
What is the deadline for hiring?
Typically around Easter is when they're usually home and that's when they're usually interviewing.
So, I mean, if the next week you can, uh, you can get these guys in there, take a look at it, give us some ideas. You can get the pool boiler people in and say, "Are we gonna have to replace burners or can we buy one more year?"
My, my next worry, Leroy, and I'm not trying to drag this out, my next worry would be timing, okay? If they can get it done, we're gonna have a thirty-day window, maybe, of weather when it's gonna be warm enough to pour cement, paint, do the things we have to do. Are we gonna get that done in a timely fashion?
Well, my thing is, is that the weather is always a factor when you're in construction, but I'd even be at the point where if you've got a three-foot diameter patch in the wall and it doesn't get painted blue to match the rest of the pool, uh, I wouldn't see that as the worst thing till it didn't get done till the next year. So, uh, uh, I, I, I just think we need to know more and if the kids, uh, if we can get some kind of an answer and it say it was gonna be a week later or two weeks later than a normal season and the kids get told, "Okay, um, we wanna hire you, but it's gonna be two weeks later this year before we start," we, we need to know that answer to, I just don't think it's that final tonight.
Okay, Leroy, the other thing is, even if, uh, let's say we get someone to look at the wall and they say, "Okay, it's, we'll have it done by May thirtieth or whatever, or, uh, June thirtieth." What happens then is once we start tearing it open, all the other ADA ish, ADA issues now come to the surface. Now, they're gonna make us meet a lot of these other things.
Yeah, and I...
And then all of a sudden, you've got a project that, let's say you're right and it's forty, fifty thousand and we can get it done and now they come with the ADA issues and now we gotta fork out another three-hundred thousand. Then is it worth it?
And I, I think you have to have a meeting about that. And my thing is, if we don't have the three-foot openings, uh, to get in there, one of the guys are over there, I asked him what it costs to saw us off wider doors to get the three-foot openings. As far as the showers, the only ADA they're gonna require on the showers is put grab bars in there at certain heights and certain angles. So, uh, the parking up on top, I don't see why our, our own city crew can't put that temporary three-four stall parking up there. If A, if ADA says, "You start that, you do that, then you automatically gotta do everything and we ain't gonna accept that," then we're kinda done. But if you get a whole ADA and say, "This is what we wanna do to approve this and we want a two, three-year, four-year lifeline to get this figured out, how we're gonna pay for it and stuff," and they accept that, then I think we're okay, but I don't know if it's that easy. It's probably like working with the state of Minnesota, it wouldn't be easy at all.
I mean, the fifteenth April's our next meeting. I mean, I think at that point, I mean, we could make, we, if we've got some numbers, we could make a concrete decision at that time, yea, nay, whether we're gonna hire, whether we're gonna, whatever we're gonna do. I mean, I think we should at least maybe, uh, look at, have some type of number to look at. I mean, we don't have anything tonight but some numbers that somebody pulled off a website.
I'd like to see some numbers, see where we're at.
You know, I would too, and that's why I'm pushing.
So, I mean, uh, I think we table it till the fifteenth until we can get some numbers. I mean, that's...
How many emotions we table it?
Oh, second. But I think we should get the numbers and if, if you could get with somebody to, you know, how much would a new basic pool be? You know, without this, whatever.
So, go down two paths, I mean, go down the fix-it path, go down the...
Yeah, for, for a basic pool, basically kinda in the same print that we have now.
At least we get an idea.
We have an idea.
I'd like Tom to take care of the updating, if we're gonna fix this. He can take care of that. You take care of, if we're just putting a basic pool, what is our basic option? If we add slides, whatever we do above a basic pool, we can do all them numbers.
Yeah.
You need...
Without the command.
It's tough.
Thank you.
It's hard, just like I have to pull these, it's hard to pull figures I've got out there and then we get a salesman involved and it's, oh, I might be here, I might be there, so, it's tough.
Well, then we might have to put it all in bits so we actually can see it. It doesn't mean we have to accept it, but that's what we have to do is put it all in bits so we know.
Right, but that gets back to the timing issue
Then we just...
of having a plan in place, putting it out for bid and then deciding without losing more than at worst one season. Because if you put the bid out too late, then you've lost two seasons.
Well, I mean, right at this point, two weeks isn't gonna make that big of a difference, folks. I mean, I mean, if we can get some, some type of number in two weeks to look at, then, then we've got something to say, "Okay, yeah, we based it off of this." But now we're just basing it off of, 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 of really nothing, I mean, at this point. I mean, yeah, we know there's issues there, but we need to know what it would take and, and give us some kinda concrete number to, to, to look at.
And what we'll do as staff too is we'll check with Goodview County Building Services and talk about, uh, okay, if we do replace part of a wall, what does that trigger as far as the building permit process? And then that might be a never-ending string or it might just end right there on the...
Right.
I mean, and the other side is too, I mean, pools, this whole, I mean, once they get this hold, they can be grandfathered in on certain things unless you're going to do a new, another whole new pool or a major restoration at that time. I mean, so that's something to look at too.
Well, I'm looking at it as updating or repairing. It's, it's not changing anything. It's basically repairs and normally under that circumstances, you, you can do a lot. But once you change an end or make it bigger or something, then you gotta beat everything.
I'm not so sure that they would let you grandfather in just because the ADA has been in compliance since nineteen eighty. So, they're gonna look at, you've had thirty-four years to, to do something and we're no, still no closer to compliance. So, that may be, the grandfather thing may be taken off the table with that, but...
Yeah, we can always try. Sometimes it's better to beg for forgiveness.
So, April fifteenth?
Yep.
Do, do both tracks and then you can decide that night?
Yep, I mean, at that point, we can make that...
Well, we'll have to decide that night.
Yeah, we'll have to decide that night. I mean, that's just the way it's gonna be. But I mean, that way, we've got something concrete to really sit down and say, "Okay, hey, looking at this, there's this, you know, that's a no-brainer, one way or the other." You have a motion to, in a sec, to table? Any other discussion? All those in favor for tabling?
Aye.
Close? Table to the fifteenth. That brings us on to item, uh, seven D, which is the adjusting correct claims for accounting period ending March twentieth, two thousand fourteen. Leroy, you brought that down?
Yeah, I just, uh, um, wanted to thank Lanell tonight because I called her about a month ago and said, "Why does Ag Partners always have late fees on there? Can't we pay our bills on time?" And I checked the thing over this month and for the first time, we don't have any on there, so appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to bring up to the council or Public Works or somebody to think about is I don't think we're rotating our gas. Uh, we got five different gas stations in town. I realize that Ag, Ag Partners is our bulk, especially our bulk person, but I would like the council and, uh, Public Works to think about rotating gas stations and for Lanell and Ron to give us their input on that if that's too complicated for billings and stuff like that. But if there's any way, we rotate hardware stores and other things in town. Uh, if we could rotate the gas too, I think that'd be a good thing to share with all stations.
I think most automotive manufacturers suggest that you use the same type of gas in your vehicle. So, if you're using Marathon, you always use Marathon. If you're using Shell, you always use Shell. Your engine will run better than to be mixing additives that are put in the different gases.
Leroy, if I could comment, uh, I just got a call about a month ago from the contractor that's got the state bid on gas and oil. And, uh, state bid pricing delivered to our tank would be about fourteen percent savings, which would correlate to about twelve thousand dollars a year in savings between the police department, Public Works. That's, uh, that's an option.
I, I, yeah, and I, I guess I'd like to hear that too, but I'm more interested in buying from... The North Side gas station for this month and, and the South one next month and, and keeping our bulk stuff with Ag Partners is fine with me, but at least sharing the business with the whole town.
Yeah, that, that's all we buy is bulk. I can't speak for the police department and them, what's, but that's all we do is the bulk tank down there.
Right, right. So, I'm not talking about, uh, Public Works, you gotta go to the gas station and fill their stuff up. I'm just saying, wherever we buy from the gas station, if, uh, if they're open and they fit our budget and stuff, I think we should rotate between different ones. That was it.
At this time, Leroy, can I get a, uh, motion to approve just incorrect claims?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the counting period for...
Second.
March.
I have a motion by Leroy and a second by Merle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Reports, Mr. Maroney.
I'm glad this laundry issue's over.
Uh, been a very tough winter, short-staffed and between fighting the snowstorms and fighting all the freeze-ups. I think I counted, we're up to forty-nine, but we haven't had a freeze-up for approximately eleven days, so that's a good sign. I feel bad for everybody that had to go through that and hopefully, uh, everybody else will be smarter next time to know what we do, what we don't do.
Hope there's not a next time.
This may be the norm.
About how long should they keep the water running yet this year?
I'm telling people another week or two. Some cities are saying May first, I don't think, w- we already have noticed the, the water coming through the mains is forty-five degrees versus it's a thirty-seven. So, we've already got that in our favor. But I would say a week or two because they're gonna hold to my word and if they freeze up, then it's gonna be what Tom said, so...
I got two on Sunday that thought themselves and I, when I got home today from the meeting, I got another call, another one thought itself. So, I don't think we're gonna have to go much beyond April twentieth or something as far as running. So, yeah, things are coming around.
Anything else, Tom? Ron?
Well, I just wanna say, uh, this is the beginning of week four for me and it's never been it all day. Not yet.
Merle?
Nothing.
Nothing. Uh, just wanna say, you touched upon earlier, we had a pretty lengthy, uh, Public Works, uh, meeting today and, um, we, we discussed, uh, many different, uh, aspects. Uh, that includes, uh, downtown trees, uh, which, uh, we've come up with a plan to address that. And so, we'll be starting on that this year. Tom, if you want, if you've got...
Trust me, nobody wants to, if you know my record with Kenyon, nobody wants to cut down a tree like I. I cut down sixteen of them on Arbor Day and the paper ready came like a thief in the night. But same kind of a situation, trees that have outgrown their livelihood, falling, I can't have that. Our intent was to take down two trees. When they started looking at them, it came down to four trees. And I, I know it's ugly to have a six-foot stump in the middle of your sidewalk, but we, we don't want people tripping over them and cutting them off short where the people are gonna be stumbling over them, so... What we'll be doing is putting some miniature trees back in there when the weather's permitting here in another couple of weeks. But, uh, I say, we, we have better things to do than take healthy trees down, so I, I just don't like the guys to get beat up over that. You know, it's easy to look at a tree and say, "Well..." But when you see a branch fall or know the liability we take on with, uh, branches that have fallen on houses and cars and things like that, we have to, uh, be proactive with that, whether it's downtown or next to somebody's house.
And then there are another, number of other, uh, items, uh, on our agenda and some of them will be coming forward. I think, uh, one or two of them are next, uh, council meeting. And, uh, so, like I said, we have a very busy, productive meeting. They, they generally last a lot longer than our council meetings. So, but, but we're moving forward and attacking all these, uh, issues that we've got.
Leroy?
Billy, you ain't gonna tell them about the big bonfire we're gonna have when we cut the trees down downtown? No, I don't have anything.
Uh, what about the library water project?
They are doing testing tomorrow at two, water testing, so we'll see what shakes out of that.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot that, uh, update the other day that they were addressing that and, uh, so, uh, just keep us informed and we can go from there. And I have nothing, so...
What about MediaCom?
There you go.
Uh, Morris, you got anything on that?
Uh, no. Mike here today.
What is that do or when is that supposed to happen?
I wasn't able to go to Mike.
Oh.
Good.
Here comes...
All you have to do is say his name.
I'm listening and paying attention.
What about MediaCom?
What's going on with their...
Yeah, so, we'll be starting negotiations, you know, sometime this spring. Um, May is when it's a year out and that's usually when things start to heat up, so...
Do you have your long list of things that they are going to do?
We, it's, uh, still in progress, but, uh, it's getting there, yeah. Right now, we're kind of getting estimates for what upgrades we'll need because these franchises tend to last ten years at least, so we're kinda putting together our, our list of needs to keep doing what we're doing and so, prob- probably, May.
We need services, let's see, how can I put this? We need to actually get the service that we are paying for. We are paying for...
HD.
HD and we are not getting true HD. HD, and we are not getting true HD.
Would, would any future, you say, a, a future contract would generally last close to ten years? Would that affect, um, you know, say, like, uh, Hiawatha broadband decided to expand into Cannon Falls? They could still do that even with that existing contract in place, because that's a different.
Yeah, typically, um, the, the franchises are not exclusive, and the laws are just that you have to treat everybody, you know, the same. So, if, if we signed a contract with MediaCom and other company wanted to come in and compete, we'd have to give them similar terms, I guess, so.
Because that would create a potential problem with, say, Channel Twelve, because,
Right, right.
MediaCom's got that, uh, someone else coming in will not have that.
Right, and that's, the PEG access thing is, is something that, yeah, we'd have to work out between the two companies. I'm not exactly sure how that, how that works legally.
Well, in, uh, Lake City, the MediaCom and, um, HBC, both were on the same channel. They just have different feeds, as I understand it. But those will be details we'll work out once.
If, if someone ever, a second company's coming, okay? Just kinda curious.
It's good to see good programming too, it's been good watching it.
Thank you.
Hey, we got you, tell that young person, welcome.
Yes, Matthew, yes, thank you very much. We're excited to have him on board.
Yeah, fun to have the young people helping out.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Anything else? Uh, Cheryl, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.